This meeting of the trustees of the Lamisa Independent School District is now in order. It is 6:00 PM on November the 16th, 2023. A forum is present with all board members present except April Martinez and Cindy Martinez. This meeting has been duly called and the notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Mr. Ritchie, would you please?
Absolutely. If you bow your heads with me, please. Dear Lord, just thank you for this group of leaders that are in this room, guide our decisions, guide our conversations, and just make sure that they are in the light that you would wish them to be. Bless all of our students, our staff, our community. Continue to keep us safe, continue to just let us walk the right path. Watch over all of us over Thanksgiving. Anybody that's traveling, keep them safe, and just make sure everybody realizes how grateful we are for the family, the food, and the fellowship that you have provided us here. Thank you for everything you do for us. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Randall Presley.
That's what she said, "The timer for three minutes."
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
All right. Thank you very much. I just want to be very, I'm from up north, so I talk fast, so three minutes is not a big deal. So, it's not on the agenda specifically, but on Section C, Part 3, Part B, Construction Building Update. I just wanted to throw something out at you. I've been an advocate for over a year now of the gym being named in honor of Mr. Lance Bailey, and I just want to make sure that that is taken directly to you as decision-makers in this district. Mr. Bailey taught for over 20 years, and I think there's not a single person in Lamisa that does not have a Mr. Bailey story. And it'd be great. We have, there was an article, there was an editorial that says, "We don't want to name buildings after people," but that's been a practice that's been literally going on for two millennia. The ancient Romans made roads after architects. It is certainly appropriate to name a gym after someone who was so instrumental in building the lives of so many young people in this district. That's all I wanted to say. I wanted to make sure that you are fully aware that that is an option, and I hope that you will pursue that option as you begin the important discussion, because a name lasts forever. Just ask the people who put the name on the junior high gym. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's good to see you.
Anybody else?
No, ma'am.
Jim Biden? You have any questions or?
I didn't have anything. I'm good. Make a motion we approve. Sorry.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Five to the floor. Financial reports?
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, everybody. Nice to see you.
Likewise.
We're going to start with the general fund by function. It's October 2003. We put a year-to-date activity, the second column, you'll see they were at $4,124,000. I looked at that and compared it to last year. Last year we were at $4,255,000. That's a $130,000 difference over this year and last year. And one of the things I'd like to make note of is that the insurance increase that we felt this year was in here, and we didn't see that kind of amount of money last year or so. So, it's a little deceptive, but that's our difference for the year-to-date number. I also took a minute and compared all of our functions with how we performed last year, and all of them were pretty much equal to, you know, there were a few that were less down, a few that were more than, but the numbers were real, the percentages were real close. It says we're operating pretty much the same way that we operated last year. And you can see the percentages there in the third column, 21, 12, et cetera, down the line. That's still kind of influenced by the insurance in some cases, and also there's still some one-time payments. You can also see those in the check register. There's still some one-time payments that are affecting, that are paying for 12 months, but they're in this bank, so they're not amortized, they're not set up as a prepaid. And really, that's all I have to mention on the report. If anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
You're good.
You're good? All right. The next item is the revenue year-to-date board report. We can see that in the second column, where we have our activity for the year, we're at $3 million today. That's, of course, $1 million in local revenue and 1.8 million or 1.9 million in state money. That's about 16%. We're looking at about 16%. You know how we look at 1/12th every month? Well, this is, the second month is 2/12ths, which is kind of unusual. Usually, it doesn't track that way. It's higher, lower, so. But anyway, we're on target to hit our budget. It's 16%. We'll just see how the rest of the year goes. And that's what I have for the revenue year-to-date report. The next item, unless somebody has a question, is the capital outlay. And of course, it's only $266, and that's just for materials that we've used in the middle school library. The next page, the next page is the monthly capital outlay, and it just shows that it was all paid out of the general fund. The next page is the check register. And I'll just go through and mention a few things, and then open it up for y'all if you have any questions. First thing that I made note on was workers' comp at $52,152. That's a one-time dollar amount. I think it was $45,000 last year, so it went up a little bit this year.
Does it fix costs you get paid every year?
Yes, sir.
Yes. From audit last year, we saw about a $2,000 increase from audit after review, so that's really not bad at all. Page two is, anybody have any questions on page one before we do? Page two is, has really, I didn't mark anything on there at all because everything is relatively small, and nothing really jumped out at me. Page three, I saw a few mushroom things on there. I saw some PT by Kathy Moore for $5,500. Down closer to the bottom, there's some Skyward money that was put out for their annual licensing fee. And proximity, which we pay for high school geometry and algebra. Page four.
I've got a question. Do we stop like parts, I mean, I know we look for big items here, but like $3.47 for a spark plug?
That's something that we're trying to fix, Mr. Mann, and I'll be honest with you. I think the habit has been, we need something, we go buy it, we need something, we go buy it, and that's something that we're trying to remedy. And we talked to our maintenance guys about having, like you said, having their own little store for the little things like that. My hope is that we can get away from those one-time quick processes.
The process is they go get a PO or?
Yes. Some of those places, we have open POs for, but for the school, and I think that that's a good thing, but it also allows some of the ease, you know?
Right.
Where my, I look at it in a way that I don't want us, if we did have a spark plug laying around, I think it's easier to go buy one. I want us getting organized so we know where everything is, and if we have something small, we can, we go get it. So, we're working on that progress, process, sorry.
All right. Page four. We have a roof repair there. That should be, that's possibly reimbursable. We sent in all the reimbursement.
You said that's page four?
Yes, ma'am.
Look there, I didn't see any big repairs like buses or vehicles or anything like that. Have a good, I guess, a good month?
That's one, let's knock on that, Mr. Mann.
Page six. There are a few items on here that were, like for 180, which is athletics, that comes around every year, and I just want to comment that Coach Morgan does a great job with his budget, so we don't worry about him too much. He takes care of business very well.
Is that the one that has the spray, all properties lawn in order?
That is our, that's, we talked about that today, and the last time, last year when we talked about this, and I looked it up, we weren't paying quarterly.
And are we talking about the spray?
The spray.
That's something we're investigating, seeing if we can get one of our own men trained to do.
And that's for the lawns?
Yes. I think that could save us a lot of money if we got one of our own people trained to do that.
Don't we have for the germ blasts, didn't we buy? So, that would be?
The germ blast stuff is the inside?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am, and so we don't have to hire out for that. I'd kind of like to do the same thing for that.
I think animals take care of that at one time, wasn't it?
He was, and we just got to get somebody trained in the right class.
And we're working on getting them in the class.
That, and asbestos, and a few of the other things that we don't have to hire out to get.
I think we're going to try also do our, do our filters. We use a service, we're going to use somebody in our, do the filters also.
Page seven. And also on page seven for the custodial supplies, is that something that we have every month, or is it just?
It's not every month. No, ma'am. It's kind of like when we buy paper for copy machines, there are certain times of the year where we kind of have to restock the closet. Custodians do what I want our maintenance and department to do. They've got a good store of stuff, when they need something, they go get it, and that's what we're trying to do.
And they do a good job of that. They take good care of monitoring it very well, so they set a pretty good example for what we want to try and do for maintenance. Page seven. Of course, page eight. I didn't highlight anything on page eight. There was nothing there. And then page nine, nothing there. We get, of course, $524,000, $598.
We're still under, like I told you guys, I'm tracking month to month, we're still under on gas. We're doing better on gas. Felt like our electric bill was higher this month than I wanted it to be. I mean, it was not much higher than last year, but just like I said, I want to track that stuff to see, you know, how we can cut down on those incidental costs like that.
And page 10 shows the check register information by fund. You'll see it, the 420,000 in there for the $10,000 we talked about, safety and security, that was the window of the NEP. Cafeteria had a $109,000 expenditure, I mean, spending, and that, that's out of their fund. They're profitable, by the way. They were profitable last year, and we budgeted for a profit this year, so we're actually having to look for reasons through small equipment to spend money. And that's all I have for the financial report. The other item is the donation that we, or Tazby, we received a $2,500 scholarship for Lamisa ISD with participation by the school board.
We really did go to.
Participation's a key word.
They worked at it to get us a scholarship. I think it was during lunch. And so, that's all that I have. I think we just have to write a file that, $2,500.
We make, don't we need a motion?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
It's all moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Five to the floor.
All right. Thank you.
Good work.
Mrs. President, and Board of Trustees, thank you all for being here. As always, thank you all for everything you do. We've been recognizing a lot of people, and rather than, we're going to start back with that in February, but I did still want to recognize somebody that's done a whole lot for Lamisa Independent School. Mike, if you would mind coming up here real quick. Mike thinks he's in trouble. It was funny, when he came in, even Melissa was like, "He looks nervous." I just, I want to read this because sometimes when I get to talking, I forget some things, but Mike is a constant positive presence here in Lamisa Independent School District. I knew Mike from a distance for a very long time. Every Friday night, I'd see him helping with the band, carrying out equipment, helping pass out food, anything that Mrs. Carey on needed. He was always polite and would always shake my hand, but I never really got to know him very well. But I soon saw that it wasn't only Friday night, it was also a contest, and it was also a concert. Anywhere the band went, he was with, he was always working hard, and he was always helping students. The other place I would often run into Mike was at Movie Land Theater. And first, I do want to say this, because I think, I think Lamisa is very lucky to have the Movie Land Theater. Not many communities our size have something like that. So, whatever you've done to keep that running, Mike, personally, I want to thank you for that, because I do think that's a rare thing. But I cannot overstate how thankfully, how thankful I personally am because of how much me and my sons enjoy going to the theater. And I have no idea how you became such an integral part of Movie Land Theater, but I do know that you've always been a great partner for Lamisa ISD. Our elementary and middle school campuses will be there on Christmas, they go every year. Our football team used it twice this year.
Yes.
Correct? Our staff has gotten where, we have staff movie nights, which is something, it's very well populated, and I think it's a good thing for our staff to get just to relax and have fellowship. And then, of course, last year, we started what I think's the neatest thing, and that senior movie night, where the theater shows a movie from the year the seniors were born. I don't see Mike not helping anytime soon since Aaron's in eighth grade. Is that right? But I just, he is somebody in the community that just does anything we ask. And every time we have a group use the theater, he goes out of his way to tell me how good they act. He often gets popcorn donated. Those seniors have never had, two years in a row, they've gotten a movie, drank popcorn, and have never had to pay a dime. And like I said, I think it's a jewel for our community, and I think what Mike has done to tie it to Lamisa ISD, and then what he does to the band, I just thought he deserved to be recognized.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that.
I appreciate it. You have a little certificate here that you know you were friends.
Absolutely.
Mary Elizabeth wants to get a picture of him.
My camera died. Come on. Hey, give me a break. I just realized.
Appreciate you very much. He has to go to work, the deer's got to open tonight, so that's why we had to get that thing done. He's got to get that man to work. So, now I'm going to move on to our principals, and we'll go in the order of South, North, Middle Highs. So, we'll start with Coach Tipton, and then we will go to Christie, and then we will go to Ms. Jasper, and then we will end with Mr. Crabb.
All right. Good evening, Mr. President Gonzalez, Mr. Ritchie, members of the board. I'm going to try to make this short, but I do want to give you guys some highlights of what's going on at South. Wanted to take a short moment to highlight some achievements and successes we've had at South since the last time I was here. First thing I'd like to inform you of is the enrollment. As of today, we have 396 students at South Elementary. Most recently, we had our Thanksgiving lunch last Tuesday, where we served over 300 guests in addition to our students and the majority of our staff. We had a packed house, but fun time serving our community and students. I have put some events I would like to speak on. The first being our pumpkin painting with parents, put on by our SESS department, and Mr. Sossida's not here tonight, but they did a great job of showing up.
Coach Tipton, turn around.
Oh, he's hiding. Man, you can trust those guys. Thank you, Frankie. Anna Melba, you did a great job.
So, we had that on October 17th, and we had a packed house, and I believe, I was told that Lamisa sold out of pumpkins right before we started, so we benefited the community there by selling some pumpkins. Let's see here. Here we go. Sorry, lost my place. All right. We participated in a candy drive with the other schools for truck or treat, and from my understanding, I got the report today, I had to double-check the numbers, we raised over 300 pounds of candy for the chamber, for the truck or treat this year. The event was awesome, and I personally had a blast seeing all of our students and taking some pictures at the event. It was really cool. I had not been to a truck or treat before. I did not realize how big it was, and I got out there, and I mean, it was like a parade going on. But it was awesome. I got some really cool pictures with my kids. They picked me out real quick, so that was a lot of fun. Let's see here. Our first graders took a field trip to Phil Sticks Farms in Midland on November 6th, where they got to visit the learning barn and the chick hatchery, where the students got to see what each farm animal provides to keep us healthy. They also got to see live milking demonstrations in the milking parlor, as well as meet spookly, the square pumpkin, and learn how to stop bullying before it starts. So, it was a very good trip for them. There were a lot of fun activities in addition with games. They've had some other, like pulling, tug-of-rope events. They had, they had slides and all kinds of different things that they could do that they had a lot of good time with. So, the staff reported back that the kids had a great time, but they were ready to go home because they were exhausted. So, that was a good time. We conducted our nine weeks with the first nine-week pep rally. We celebrated our student attendance, tours of the nine weeks, teacher of the month, and the Apple Award recipients that you saw last time. We enjoyed some great programs put on by Officer Boyd, who I did see with his red ribbon program at the high school, which was a hit with the dogs, and our weekly dare programs on Wednesdays at South for our first and second graders. Our UIL academic programs have kicked off with students participating in creative writing, spelling, and storytelling. And our ACE program is working collaboratively with our teachers to focus on areas to strengthen current academic skills. In addition to our students have been working hard academically in their reading challenges and ST math puzzles, I was told today that our campus has currently completed 140,601 puzzles in ST math, which is a huge accomplishment. Last thing I'd like to highlight is on November 3rd, we sent four teachers to the NLI Mega Conference in Houston. Houston, that's the National Leadership Institute. They got to attend multiple sessions for the day. Some topics they attended were addressing student mental health needs in the classroom, crafting interactive lessons to hook students, reinvention of literacy planning, elevating literacy levels among high economically disadvantaged students, keys to unlocking reluctant learners, parent and community involvement. This group of teachers has decided to lead our new literacy nights, and will be meeting with me and the rest of the administration after Thanksgiving break to develop a plan on that. On the horizon, we have Ms. Bitten's Annual Christmas Play, which will be the Christmas at the OK Corral this year. That'll be December 4th at the LHS Auditorium at 6:00 PM. And then, we have Movie Land for our South Elementary on December 13th and 15th. Thank you for your time. If you have any questions.
What time did you say the play at the OK Corral's going to be?
That is going to be at 6:00 PM. Doors open at 5:30.
Got you.
December 4th.
December 4th.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Good evening, members of the board and President, Mr. Ritchie. Updates from North Elementary. We have increased our enrollment. We're now at 302, so we jumped over that 300 number. We too also had extraordinary attendance at our Thanksgiving lunch yesterday. We also served over 300 people, so it was more than we had planned for, so we ended up opening up the library, and everybody got to have a place to, to sit and eat and enjoy with their families. So, it was great to see a lot of our families that we don't see unless we have those opportunities. Some of the things I wanted to share with you guys are the things that we've done at North. Our Veterans Day program was very well attended. Each of our grade levels sang patriotic songs, and then we also did a tribute to some of our local veterans, so that was exciting to watch them. They behaved very well, better than we anticipated. We were prepared to have to address it, and they were absolutely phenomenal. So, we're very proud of their hard work putting that together, and to Ms. Harameel, our music teacher, that put that program together. North Elementary has also started their dare program. Officer Boyd does that on Mondays for us for our fifth graders. Some things that we have upcoming is our education day at Texas Tech. We'll take our fifth graders up there for a girls' Texas Tech basketball game, and they talk about opportunities for higher education for our students. So, it's a great opportunity for them to see the campus culture and to see, well, some good basketball, too. We also have a Christmas program coming up. It'll be on December 14th, and it'll also be at the high school auditorium at 6:00 PM. That will be a collaboration of all three of our grade levels, so we're looking forward to that as well. As far as instruction on our campus, our teachers have been working hard in our team meetings each week with our curriculum coordinators. During that time, they look at data and how our students have been doing on assessments. Earlier in the year, we took the MAP test, and what that is, kind of give us the baseline of where our students are, and then we monitor and track their performance on our ongoing assessments, if it's in the middle of the unit, at the end of the unit, and then they take that information and look at how to address students that need additional support. We've also had our risk meetings this week. Those meetings identify our students that need the most support, and those interventions will begin after Thanksgiving, so they've been working really hard to provide our students for what they need. As the semester ends, some other exciting things, we did have some teachers that attended the CAST conference, that's for science. Our fifth grade teachers attended that, as this is the year that they will test for science, so the first time that our kids test is in fifth grade. So, it was a great opportunity for them to learn the different curriculum. Those TEACs, the standards, will be changing coming up next year, so it gives them an advanced view of what to be planning for, for our students. Our ACE program after school hired a new coordinator. She's been a fantastic addition. Her name is Danielle Medrano, and she's come in and started rocking, so it's been a great thing to have her join the team and work with our students after school. Lastly, we'll sum up our semester with another assembly with our students. We'll continue to honor their progress and their improvement, our character traits that we try to instill every day, and keep saying amazing things. Our data so far is trending. I have a note on this to tell you this. So far, our data is trending well above what our STAR scores were last year, so we're super excited to see what, what progress our students make this year. And that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Jasper.
Good evening. How are y'all?
Good.
Our attendance rate at Lamisa Middle School is 94% right now, and our current enrollment is 336. We have gone up. We've lost some kids, but we've gained some kids, but since the last time I reported to y'all, we've gone up. Sixth grade has 121, seventh grade 99, and eighth grade 116. We've been doing a lot of small group instruction during our team time, so our teachers are pulling a small group of kids, not more than five, and they're working with them, and that's been helping a lot, getting our kids where we need them to be, and then we're also still doing the mind playing ST math, and our kids have been doing really good working on that. Our teachers are working on intentional lesson planning. meetings each week with our curriculum coordinators. During that time, they look at data and how our students have been doing on assessments. Earlier in the year, we took the MAP test and what that gives kind of give us the baseline of where our students are. And then we monitor and track their performance on our ongoing assessments, if it's in the middle of the unit, at the end of the unit. And then they take that information and look at how to address students that need additional support. We've also had our risk meetings this week. Those meetings identify our students that need the most support and those interventions will begin after Thanksgiving. So, they've been working really hard to provide our students for what they need. As the semester ends, some other exciting things, we did have some teachers that attended the CAST conference, that's for science. Our fifth grade teachers attended that. As this is the year that they will test for science, so the first time that our kids test is in fifth grade. So, it was a great opportunity for them to learn the different curriculum. Those TEACs, the standards will be changing coming up next year, so it gives them an advanced view of what to be planning for, for our students. Our ACE program after school hired a new coordinator. She's been a fantastic addition. Her name is Danielle Medrano, and she's come in and started rocking. So, it's been a great thing to have her join the team and work with our students after school. Lastly, we'll sum up our semester with another assembly with our students. We'll continue to honor their progress and their improvement, our character traits that we try to instill every day and keep saying amazing things. Our data so far is trending, I have a note on this to tell you this. So far, our data is trending well above what our STAR scores were last year. So, we're super excited to see what progress our students make this year. And that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, Ms. Jasmine.
Good evening, how are y'all?
Good.
Our attendance rate at Lamisa Middle School is ninety-four percent right now and our current enrollment is three thirty-six. We have gone up, we've lost some kids, but we've gained some kids. But since the last time I reported to y'all, we've gone up. Sixth grade has a hundred and twenty-one, seventh grade ninety-nine, and eighth grade a hundred and sixteen. We've been doing a lot of small group instruction during our team time, so our teachers are pulling a small group of kids, no more than five, and they're working with them and that's been helping a lot, getting our kids where we need them to be. And then we're also still doing the mind playing ST math. And our kids have been doing really good working on that. Our teachers are working on intentional lesson planning and becoming more vulnerable, taking risks, you know, asking the higher level questions. That's something that we're working on as a district. And so, that's a little scary sometimes, but they're doing a great job on taking those risks and being that. And our kids are also taking the risks of answering questions because that's intimidating. Even if they don't know the answer, they're still putting it out there, they're trying and stuff. And so, that's really amazing to watch because you're seeing a lot of growth happen there. We also are starting our risk where we're identifying kids and we're preparing for those meetings. And then we're also gonna start our dare program tomorrow with Officer Boyd.
She liked it.
That was amazing. Our discipline, this is a big thing to note because we kind of started comparing our discipline from last year to this year and it's actually gone down significantly. I don't know the exact amount, but I would say by at least half it's gone down, so that's a huge thing. We have great kids. We've always had great kids. They're just at that age where they want to try things, they want to have fun at middle school. So, I think that's a big thing and we've really taught our kids about that and just praised them and everything for that because it's hard to be a little teenager at middle school. And we did pass our safety audit, I don't know if y'all know that, we passed one hundred percent, I'm very proud of that. This is our second year in a row. We had our first school dance this year and it was a huge hit. We were a little scared because we didn't allow any students to bring in phones to the school dance and that's a little risky sometimes, but they all turned them in very willingly at the table. We locked them up and we had the best school dance ever. It was really neat to see the kids talking with each other because that's something you don't see. And they were all dancing and like the dance floor was on fire all night long. So, it was really, really fun to watch and our teachers that came, they danced, you know, with the kids and I personally had fun too, so I'm a big kid. But it was really neat to see that engagement, so it shows that they don't need their phones all the time. Like if you take it away, they'll actually go out there and have fun. And some of the parents that came and volunteered, they were kind of just in awe seeing their student have fun because they were like, I didn't think I would see that. Because last year, we had our dance and they were all just kind of sitting around on their phone, you might see dancing here and there, but it was great. We had our annual Veterans Day assembly, it was a huge success. The council puts that on and then Jeremy Hernandez and his art class, they always provide some beautiful, amazing art. The band play, we had, the high school came out and they did taps for us and then the flag girls came out. And then our principal leadership team, they were greeters and our cheerleaders, they also helped with greeting and seating people. And our life skill kids, they serve cookies and coffee and that's always a big deal. They get such a joy out of doing that. And then we also participated in trunk or treat. I do not know how many pounds of candy that we got, but we did get quite a bit, not as much as Mr. Tipton, he won the blue ribbon on that one. But we were real close, I think. Anyway, we went out and we did trunk or treat. We partnered with the high school student council and we had a booth out there and we had a bunch of kids come to our booth and it was really, really fun and fun. It was fun. They had so many cute costumes and the kids and our kids, it's neat to watch them give, you know, because their hearts are pure and genuine, so that was really neat. Y'all know we came with a donation, I don't know, approval I guess is what it's called, where we had to get y'all to approve our donation because Raider Trump and Mitch Holley donated. I had a dream last year, I was walking through the halls and I asked some of our kids, hey, where's your Lamisa shirt? You know, after the fifth kids whom we missed, you know, we can't get one, we don't have one. I was determined this year, I don't know how to get them a shirt. And so, I started talking to people and sharing my story with them. And this year, by partnering with those two groups, we were able to give every student a shirt. And it's not geared towards the middle school, it's just for Lamisa. So, they have something to wear and we gave it to them on Friday and I've seen them wearing them a lot. And it was, it was very, it was a blessing for me, I think, more than anything and for our staff because the kids, when we handed them out, they were like, these are for us. They were just in shock and they said, we get to keep them. And so, just, it was pretty, y'all. I don't know how to explain it, it was just beautiful for them to see it. And then to see them wearing them, we've seen them wear them quite a bit since Friday. So, that was really neat and a blessing. And then today, we had our Thanksgiving meal and we were able to serve one hundred and fifty families, I don't know the exact head count, but that's what the cafeteria people said it was of our hundred and fifty. So, we had our halls full with tables and stuff. And I think that's a good number for middle school because usually at that age group, they don't really come.
The kids don't want to.
Yeah, they don't.
The kids don't want to.
They don't. And then I'm super stoked, thank you guys for everything y'all have done for our media center and our library because it is gorgeous, y'all have to come out and see it.
I told them that you told me I couldn't bring them, so I'm waiting for you to give me the green light.
Okay, we have the green light, y'all come tomorrow. It's just the only thing that we need to do is get some pretty, you know, prints or something put up in there. But our teachers are loving the media center. It's really nice to walk by and see them just down there and enjoying it and planning down there. We've seen our teams go down there. We have like little, they're like little pub chairs and a little coffee table in the middle. So, y'all see groups just kind of navigate to that area and talk and it's really neat because I haven't, that's something I hadn't been seeing at the school. And so, to see that collaboration and that fellowship, it's nice. It just means a lot to my heart and it touches my heart. So, thank y'all for all your support on that. And then last, I don't have a bunch of stuff like they do, but we're going to movie land, so thank you.
You just have movie land, here it'll work.
But we're going on the seventeenth and eighteenth, so we'll take the sixth grade in the morning or the afternoon, we'll take seventh grade, then sixth grade, then eighth grade. And so, they're gonna be really excited about that. Haven't told them yet, they'll be so excited. And then I brought pictures, y'all don't laugh because it's hard trying to wrangle kids to take a picture, but we thought we would do this really cool LMS thing. And you'll see our gap, but hey, we did it and they had fun. And that's them in their shirts when we presented it to them. That was an exciting day. Don't be like a kid, it was the best day ever.
Tell me one last.
You want one? I want two. Okay. You have to hold it. That's what I have.
Thank you, Ms. Jasmine.
I will say that you do model the leadership that that school has been needing for a while and we do appreciate everything that you do because it does start from what, from what you do down to your faculty.
Thank you so much.
You both did work.
Yes.
Mr. Carrera.
I'll shout out by giving this hand out so.
Stepped up the game. You can.
So, y'all can see something besides seeing the top.
Thank you. I'm not gonna say anything.
Go ahead, say.
No, I want to know who did this for you. It looks great.
Always hire better people than myself.
Hundred percent.
Just control the evil.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Good answer, good answer.
Good evening, Board President Gonzalez, Superintendent Ritchie, and members of the school board. Before I get started with my presentation, I want to share a phrase I learned early in my career in education. And the phrase goes like this. It takes a village to raise a child, which originated from an African proverb, an amazing message that it takes many people, the village, to provide a safe, healthy environment for children, where children are given the security they need to develop and flourish and to be able to realize their hopes and dreams. I believe education is a major catalyst in providing our students with the opportunity to fulfill their hopes and dreams. In education, the district, in my opinion, is the village. It takes the board, the superintendent, cabinet, principals, counselors, teachers, custodial maintenance, transportation, CNS, community, parents, and many other departments and positions that I mentioned, however, are of equal importance. That being said, I'd like to share a few things that are going on within the walls of Lamisa High School. We have a young girl in theater by the name of Kennedy, who is a senior this year, and she directed the play Unexpected Tenderness. She started working on the show in August. She planned the show, ran rehearsals, designed the set, costumes, and sound. We have a young man by the name of Francisco, who I came to find out did not speak much at all last year. Well, he is now in the yearbook class and has made friends in interacting with other students. And in fact, I've seen him sit in the cafeteria with friends and laughing and enjoying himself. When I first met this young man, he was sitting in the corner in the cafeteria all by himself and then did style seating all by himself. I went and talked to him, we had a great conversation and it just makes my heart jump for joy to see him now interacting with other kids and it's really a nice sight to see. In Skills USA, they have officially started participating or practicing for their first invitation of competition in Lubbock this Friday. And we'll be competing in building search, felony traffic stop. I went out one time to the parking lot and I saw them and I observed them doing it and it was very intense. And so, I'd like to be there for that, but I don't think I'll be able to make it. They have misdemeanor traffic stop, agility course, and opening and closing court statements. In the construction classes, they are currently working on teacher appreciation gifts. This activity allows students to get comfortable with using PPE, dimensions, tools, and design process, as well as learning how to read blueprints and drawings. This activity allows our students to give our own staff and show much, how much they appreciate what they do. Some highlights of our Golden Tornado Band, this season at the West Texas Auxiliary Contest in the percussion area, they received a third place in Division three A drum line. In color guard, they received a first place in Division three A and the drum majors received a superior rating. In the Lubbock Westerner Festival in Division three A, four A, outstanding percussion, they received a first place out of fifteen. In Division three and four A color guard, they received fourth place out of fourteen. And then the Golden Tornado Band finished the season with an excellent rating from all three judges at the UIL marching contest. In our EOC English classes, we are seeing great growth in our students' ability to write extended responses or STAR specific essays. We've improved from either not writing at all or writing minimal responses to having nicely developed essays that could receive high marks from STAR score. In business English classes, seniors have been working on personal finance planning, financial planning, creating financial goals for short term and long term, focused on personal budgeting with real life scenarios such as college expenses, car payments, and rent. You can tell they're seniors because they're getting ready for it, all that stuff. In Algebra I, students have been, have seen an increase in many key fundamental skills like solving equations, finding slopes, and overall grasp on algebraic skills. In college algebra, college prep, and dual credit algebra, students have improved the mathematical reasoning and problem solving skills. And students in the college algebra and college prep started using the new program to assist them in passing the TSI, which helped colleges and universities see if students are ready for college level courses. In Ag and FFA, five students recently competed in four different leadership events, which pairs them for real world scenarios such as public speaking and job interviews. Two of our students placed in the top five in their events. In CNA and phlebotomy, twenty-seven students are CPA and basic life support trained and certified, and each have been instructed on mass casualty and stop the bleed. And in closing, so many times we allowed outside noise to interfere with the teaching, learning of our students. Let's stay the course, be committed to teaching and learning of all of our students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Dr. Nelson.
Good evening, Madam President, Board Members, Superintendent Ritchie. I'm here tonight, I have the first agenda item is to present to you the wellness policy. And the Student Health Advisory Council, the SHAC Committee, basically we call it, met recently. We finalized and approved at that level the wellness policy. As a district, we are required to annually have the board approve that policy. And it is one of the attachments you guys will receive. It's exactly the same as last year with the only updates being the committee chairperson and superintendent and any other names that needed to change to match the new leadership structure. So, hopefully you've had the time to review that. I'm of course not asking you to approve that right now, I'm asking what questions you might have about that, about the committee, about the wellness policy, anything else that we're undertaking. And then you will hopefully approve that later in the agenda. So, are there any questions about the SHAC or about the wellness policy? Thank you very much. So, the next item I'll move forward is a discussion, an update for you guys on an international teacher recruitment program. We have currently international teachers. We have two. They have been here for five years, this is their fifth year. And with international teachers on a J-1 visa, they basically get five years. They get three to start, they can apply for an additional two, so they can serve up to five years, but then they must go back to their home country. They have to stay for a minimum of two years to share with their home country what they learned here. That's kind of the purpose of the teacher exchange. And then after that two-year period, they can, during that two-year period, they can apply to come back and after that period, if they're approved, they can come back again. Typically, they can come back either on another J-1 or sometimes they come back on an H-1B, they can stay longer, they can apply for permanent residency. But that's kind of what international teaching is about. As you know, there's a teacher shortage in Texas and we recruit from all over the state, all over the country, and actually districts recruit all over the world. A district that I've worked with in the past had a strong reliance on international teacher recruitment. Tonight, I'm gonna introduce you to a gentleman, Mr. Robbie Chakamuri. He was instrumental in that program. In one year, the first year, I was really trying to wrap that program up. We brought in twenty-one from India. The same year, we brought in twenty-one. Kermit brought in, I believe, five. And so, his program has experience with large districts and small districts. These teachers have been highly successful. I can tell you, it's probably the most successful teacher recruitment program there is. Twenty-six were brought in in two years, all twenty-six are still in that county. So, they don't quit, they work together, and I'm just excited to have the opportunity, Mr. Ritchie and I, to work, possibly work with Robbie in order to bring that program to Lamisa. He's gonna explain to you in depth, you'll hear a short presentation from him after he's done, we will kind of answer any questions that you might have, so you can begin to get a comfort level with the international recruitment program. Any questions before I bring up Mr. Chakamuri? So, Mr. Chakamuri, come on up. He is CEO of Star Tech Group. His bio is extensive. He's been an owner and CEO of healthcare companies, medical, I won't call it medical billing, but medical transcription and all those kinds of things. And his biggest venture, I have to say, is not what he's presenting to us tonight, but he has a program that one day I hope we can present to you guys, it's called Access, and he is impacting hundreds of thousands of students, just signed Houston ISD.
Looking at them.
Okay, close to signing Houston ISD on a partnership and it's wonderful for getting, helping kids understand the job market. Not here to talk about that tonight, I apologize for going into that, but I just want you to know this man has a background in the public sector as well as the private sector and he's really helping students across the state and across the country now. So, other than that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Chakamuri and then we'll answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Thank you. Madam President, Board Members, Superintendent Ritchie, thank you very much, Dr. Nelson.
Yes.
Just context, I went to Texas Tech, I went to Houston, Austin, and been in Odessa about twenty-seven years, business background. I have a son who went to Acton, Bakersah High. So, back in two thousand thirteen, I was chatting with him, he was going from movie middle school to high school. He lost a lot of his friends who did not come to high school. We were talking about it and that's when we started about the dropout rates, how kids don't come to high school, from high school they also drop out. So, in two thousand fourteen, I started looking at this model, how do you help, what can you do about it, just as an outsider? So, then to deliver my technology background, create the program called Access, how to help middle, low income family kids who do not understand.
how to help middle, low-income family of kids who do not understand how, why they should be in a classroom. So we built on that. So I started working with Acton, that's when they reached out to me about, hey, can you help with some teachers? Because in India we come from, because we have a high value for education. So in Indian tradition, we have the mother who's the head of the family, then the father, then the teacher, because that's the name, that's how everybody goes about it. So when they said that, yeah, we said definitely, something new, I never did that. So Dr. Nelson reached out and we said, okay, because it's so difficult to get the teachers, right teachers to USA, the process is very complicated. So we partnered with the local state government in India. So the government, state government actually recruits, has established a center to train teachers, identify and train teachers who want to come to USA for five years. The reason is this, these teachers, they believe in the coming of five years and they return back, they have a wealth of knowledge that is helping their schools back in India. So that is the reason I started on this venture. So we have started with Acton and we are in about seven or eight schools. We place, we are not a high volume, we are very selective in what we place. We place about sixty-five teachers and all the sixty-five teachers from Dallas ISD to Houston to Austin to Acton, everybody we place are supported by the teachers who have come before them. So we take off the burden of having the local district or somebody else having to lift it and get them to get familiar with that. But our approach is, right now is it's no cost to the district and the teachers come in for five years. So we do extensive screening. The local training center does two levels of screening, then they do three interviews with me and my team, including myself, one-on-one interviews. Then they, we screen them and give them to the school district, then the principals interview them. Once the principals can interview them even once or maybe even twice, then they get approved. Before they come to the school district, our J-1 sponsor also interviews one more time. So they almost go to six pieces of interviews before they get qualified to be hired to the district. But we have, since you're hiring already two teachers from Philippines, same process. We will introduce to a J-1 sponsor and the J-1 sponsor will have a contract with the district. So the district also does not have a cost for working with the J-1 sponsor. At the end of the day, we already have a list of our fifteen, sixteen teachers ready to be interviewed if you approve this and if you accept it and move forward for the next school year. Here to answer any questions you may have.
Before you start, I want to say one thing. I want a refund because he used to charge us seventy-five hundred dollars, well, the cost, seventy-five hundred dollars per teacher. And the year we got twenty-one teachers, that's over a hundred and fifty thousand, but he's worked with the state of Texas, he's worked with the Indian government and maybe, I think you might have mentioned the US government, to set up a center there so the cost is now zero for schools, so we don't have to pay a penny. I wanted to throw that out there.
So because that was the first batch, our expenses were expensive. So basically to cover our expenses, that's how we requested that money, that went to cover our costs of starting it up. Once we started it up, there's no cost to us. So therefore, the teacher pays the fees to the J-1 sponsor and there's a processing fee for us, they will say ask for that. That's about it. That's where there's no cost to the district because many of the districts can't afford to do that, that's the bottom line. But the teachers love the smaller school districts, we have seen that. They are much more friendlier, they feel more at home, they like Kermit and they love Kermit, that's all it is. They had options to come to Odessa, they said, no, thank you. It was a surprise, but it was the other way around. And the students and the teachers and the principals, they love these teachers. So at the end of the day, this is a program we want to promote and once the five years are, we expect them to leave. And they can go back for two years and they can come back if they would like to, but fifty percent come back and fifty percent stay back. Because what they do is the government, since we work with them, gives them an extended leave of absence. So they take five years of absence, so their retirement benefits, everything are still there when they go back and they finish their career and they plan to come back after retirement. So that way, they are getting the benefits of the track record they have, but they also want to do what's good for the family.
What is the timeframe from when you start to when you hire, like the process?
We start in December, we recommend that. The only bottleneck is called the DS form, the number of sponsor places available by the immigration department to bring in international teachers. So each J-1 sponsor gets a fixed number. This agency out of Austin gets hundred spots. So the quicker we interview and approve, they'll give us a DS form from that J-1 sponsor. So we start in December, in January make a job offer, by July they would be here for a professional development program to get started for the next school year.
If you'll remember, because Shelley, Shelley was-
Did y'all bring the Philippines in?
We did. Shelley was the principal and if you'll remember, I think she had to go pick them up, they were not there for the first couple of weeks of school.
Couple of weeks after school started.
Because we started a little late.
Then she had the five of a house.
Yep.
Love it.
Yep. So this timeline's a lot more beneficial.
That's going to be my question, what part do y'all play in helping get them lodging? Because I know that was a not merit because-
What we have done is, the first group of teachers said, what do we owe you? He said, you help the next group of teachers. So we have set up that cycle. So they're starting to help each other. So we have teachers, almost thirty teachers, including Holy Cross and some other schools, about thirty to forty teachers in Odessa, Midland and Kermit area. So those teachers will support these teachers to find a home, get them trained, get them oriented, whatever they need to do.
Toad, Jerry.
Blanca Floor. Blanca Floor and then Ms. Bargayo over at Moore.
The first year was tough because we brought in so many and the support system wasn't quite set up yet. He has a great organization of Indian citizens in Odessa who came together with supplies and materials and places to stay. The district, we asked teachers, we said, hey, we got this group coming, can you guys help out? So it was a community-wide effort to help them. It wasn't as smooth that first year as it was the second year because of the built-in network, but the training that they receive before they come kind of gets them ready for that. They're not accept, they're not expecting to come and have everything prepared for them. These are adult professionals that have been in the industry from five years of teaching to as many as twenty years of teaching. So they, they're adults, they're financially stable. If they weren't, they couldn't pay the J-1 fees and all the other fees associated with it. So they come with some resources and it's a lot, it was a lot more manageable than I feared having twenty-one coming in one year, but now it's a lot, it's a lot better set up. And I think you said you have some resources in Lubbock as well, correct? So he has some resources in Lubbock. So they'd be able to tap into Midland, Odessa and Lubbock to kind of get them centered. Kermit for that small-town deal, what does it feel like to work in a district, you know, of less than three thousand students? They can get that from the Kermit teachers and I, I think they'll be successful, like I said, we didn't have one who quit on us, we didn't have one that we had to let go, they all survived. And when you bring in twenty-one teachers at the beginning of any year, you're going to lose some. And typically, you're going to lose one or two before Christmas. That was our experience with our regular teachers. With these teachers, they're resilient and they support each other. Now, do they have the same kind of issues that the teachers have? Of course, but their network is so strong, that's what I really appreciate about it.
So with the Philippines, they weren't part of a, they weren't part of a company like-
It was a very loose organization, Mr. Mann. And you'll remember, we would get emails with just lists of fifty names on it and to track down who to contact was, it was never easy. And that's why I like this, this is a company. It's, you know, I mean, it's just so much more organized than it was.
Do you think the housing apartments out there would, because I know you have to sign a year's lease.
Right.
Do you think they would work on the timing of a teacher?
I do. I've been visiting a lot with Chamber Commerce and Ms. Ferguson about not just the existing apartments, but if they ever get these other ones going.
Because I know that was the biggest not merit.
A hundred percent.
She ended up having to sign something for them to, yes, she teaches.
Yeah. And Blanca Floor ended up in Lubbock, you know, Bargayo, she lives, she lives in Lubbock as well? Does she live here in Las Vegas?
No, she lives right behind me.
I knew Blanca Floor was still driving back and forth.
So they get to stay, they could stay more than five years?
No, this is, this is-
They have to go back for two and then come back if they-
No, I mean-
They're both having to go back.
No, they've got to go back after.
This is their last year.
Their fifth year.
Yes, sir.
One thing we didn't mention, we're looking for math and science, that we're focusing on math and science because of the technical, math and science is math and science everywhere, so that technical aspect comes with them a hundred percent. And we're looking, with principals selection, we're looking for up to six. The J-1 sponsor is kind of earmarking six spots for us. The sooner, as he said, the sooner we get engaged in the process, the better. I visited with the principals before we went any further. I wanted to talk to them before we asked Robbie to come down, before we thought about putting it on a board meeting and both Mr. Carrera and Mrs. Jasper both said, hey, very much interested.
And any, y'all know this, Dr. Nelson says that in Texas, teacher shortages are everywhere. So any resource you can get these days to possibly get some people.
And so the two that came, they've been here five years.
And done well.
That's-
And both want to come back. I tried to work with both of them, I'm sorry, that's personnel, I shouldn't mention. They both want to come back. And so the plan is for them to do their two years, when they return, and seek options to come back.
Hopefully to the Mesa.
Oh, yeah.
They want to come back to, definitely to the Mesa.
They love it.
Nowhere else.
We love them.
They came from four countries and they've been there five years through everything they've been through, that's pretty resilient.
It seems fast, it's hard to believe, it's twenty-five.
I was trying to think what year.
But if, you have any more questions?
Thank you, Robbie, very much.
We thank my pleasure.
Thank you, we appreciate you coming down.
I know you have to, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
We need to do this.
I'll do it, I can throw it in there right now, yes, ma'am.
So do you do anything on that?
No, no, sir, this is just information.
You be safe, brother.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carrera, what was your number up at high school, if you'd mind me asking?
Four eighty-sixth at high school with five at academy.
Five.
Five.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So since you asked that, Mr. Oh, hey, I'll just start there. So that puts our total enrollment at one thousand five hundred and twenty-five students. Guys, in September, enrollment was one thousand four hundred and ninety students. I mean, we gained thirty-five students since September.
Very good.
And I hope that number continues to rise. I'd like to get back into those pre-COVID numbers at some point, those kids just gradually are coming back. Let's talk about the depository extension form real quick, it's on your, it's on your board agenda. It's something I've already spoke to you guys about. We are staying with first financial for the next two years, at which point, you know, we've talked in depth about, you know, the plans moving forward. There's no action to be done on that, that's why I included the emails update the other day, just information on that deal. Jasper bragged about her security audit, but Tipton did not brag on his. So Jasper got hit twice, she got hit last year and this year, but then last week, I believe, they came to South. So TEA came to South and again couldn't get in any door and we got perfect scores all the way down. So good job. So that's a huge deal.
And they just take, just come in randomly?
They show up whenever they want, they try to get in three outside doors and if they get in, they walk around till somebody stops them. If they don't get in, they come to the front and then they evaluate all of your sign-in procedures and make sure you do everything right, make sure you check their license, make sure you give them a badge. And then at that point, they tell you who they are and they get an administrator to walk them around and they've got certain things they look to make sure that are secure. So we have yet to get, one, one has not gotten in our school yet, who's done a good job.
So what excuse do they use when they walk up? They want to just register in school, come in school.
When do they tell you, Jasper, do they tell you once they walk in the front?
They walk in and they check in and they just ask for the administrator and then, you know, once we come up, that's when they let us know.
Oh, okay.
Who they are, they identify themselves.
Last year-
I had the same one last year, so I knew them.
You know Jasper, I mean, when I walked in, it's like they've known each other forever, they're just sitting there pugging each other and talking. Last year, they only came once. They picked one campus in the district. This year, they're coming a total of four to five times. So I expect every campus to get hit, you know. So I've told them, and every Monday, we have a meeting with our sorrows and we just remind them, you know, be on alert. But that's to say, our doors are locked anyway, we do a really good job of that, but I am proud every time that they cannot get in a door because that's a big deal.
Like at high school, does it go all the way to the fieldhouse, to the gym? I mean, I could say that.
They usually treat you pretty fair and I think they will try to get into the main building, but I think CTE to office is probably going to be fair now. But once they do tell you where they are, then yes, they will go to the fieldhouse and make sure those are secure, they'll go to, they'll go to every building you have on you.
That's where your high school would be more susceptible.
To me, that's, that's the big one. That's the big one, Mr. Carrera, be ready.
We're ready.
Be ready for it. The, I wanted to brag on Frankie today, they gave out in Ms. Coster his help. How many total Thanksgiving meals did you give out today?
Hundred and five.
How much?
Hundred and five.
Hundred and five. He had help from Premier Dodge, I believe, as well as Flavrens, but they do a good job of identifying families and tell them what all was in it, it's not just turkeys, tell them the whole thing.
That was the whole meal, it was turkey stuffing, two cans of corn, chicken breathing, pie, pollet.
Rolls.
Rolls.
I just think it's awesome, you know, because that's, we try to identify families in our community that are not going to be able to do that for themselves. And I think, we started giving away turkeys two, three years ago and it's just slowly grown into the full meal and I just want to brag on them because that's an-
Is this all donated?
Yes, sir, every bit of it. Premier, I think, gives us money to go buy some things and then I think Flavrens donates a lot and then we buy the stuff that's not donated from them with the money from here. But everything is donated, yes, sir.
Thank you.
And then like all of our principals said, I, we served over seven hundred and fifty Thanksgiving meals over the last few days, that's awesome.
That's a lot.
That's a lot. And so you were right, South was packed. Every campus, South is packed, North is kind of packed, middle school, y'all are right, those seventh and eighth graders are like, oh mama, don't come eat with me.
Well, North was pretty packed this year because last year it was packed, but this year it was like over.
There was a lot of people.
Yes.
It's awesome. Veterans Day, I did want to brag on them, they both talked about their assemblies, but guys, those are rare. Like I've been at a lot of schools that don't do anything for Veterans Day and ever since I've been in the Mesa as a head football coach, the one at the middle school's always been just something I looked really forward to, you know, and I really enjoyed yours as well over at North and y'all were right, the kids, and that's where this picture was taken and that's what I liked most about the T-shirts that she got. When they do assemblies and everything, they're unified. Every single one of those kids was in the stands, was doing a great job of being who I know they can be, but they all looked the same to represent the Mesa, which I just thought that was awesome, but you know. So congrats on both of y'all for pulling those off because I can promise you our veterans appreciate it. And you know, we served them breakfast that morning, I can promise you they appreciate that too. I think treating veterans that way in our community, I think it just goes a very long way. Construction, everything on the new gym is going to get fixed. Timelines are what we're working out. And the concrete was the biggest one. I really never had any doubt they were going to fix the roofs, but I was a little worried with the concrete because of the way they behaved the first time they came out. But since then, and I've kind of touched base on this with you guys, we've gotten the head honchos out here and even if our one year ends, everything's been reported, so time doesn't matter anymore. We're going to work around basketball, we're working on getting them here when, because I don't want to get the concrete fixed and then have the fallist tournament and then all of a sudden possibly stuff gets broken again. I want to get some of that high traffic over with, then get it fixed at a time it can sit for a bit and not have a whole lot of traffic on it. You know, we've had enough rain lately that we have found, we, and we've always had leaks, I think every school's going to have leaks, but we've always had leaks around the district, but we're trying to come up with a plan to, much like we're doing with transportation, much like we're going to do when we paint the buildings, to not talking about this stuff that's covered under warranty, is prioritize how to get this district back to where we don't have to worry about those things because there's a lot of just little things here and there. We do need, and it says on your agenda board training date for January, what I would propose is, in y'all's weekly update, just let me shoot y'all a lot of January dates and then y'all, kind of like we normally do, just look at your schedules and tell me which one fits you best, because that, we said we have two months before we have to figure that out. Because that, we, we said we have two months before we have to figure that out, so. Our board meeting is January eighteenth, and I was already looking at the calendar, but if that's okay with y'all, I will shoot y'all some possibilities and then we can kind of figure that out.
Just look at the basketball schedule.
It's a lot, that's why I, I think it'd be really hard to just do it right now. You have a policy manual update, I included this in your board update the other day, just because it's a lot, it's twenty-one pages and I just wanted you to have a little extra time to go through it. I did try to highlight things that I thought, I mean, it's all important, but I tried to highlight things that were very relevant to us. Did you have any questions over that? We will have to approve that here in a little bit. And then the last thing is the legislative update and I also included, and I, I just, it's a lot, so you probably haven't looked at it, but if you do get bored in your attachments, it's the highlights of House Bill One. And this is going to be heard tomorrow morning on the House floor. And there's a whole lot of people going to Austin tonight and tomorrow, just to show their non-support for what they're about to try to do. I just have a couple of things on each page highlighted, so House Bill One is going to be heard on the House floor. It passed out of the Education Committee fourteen to, fourteen to four, I believe, which that's the first time any voucher bill has got out of the House. It's always gotten out of the Senate, it's never gotten out of the House, which tells me there's a good chance this, this one is going to come to fruition. There's a lot of stuff I, I think is bad, I, I told y'all, I don't think this is going to affect Lamisa for a couple of years, but it's going to affect every public school in the state of Texas. So House Bill One removes the cap, at one point I told you guys that one of the bills was going to cap it at only twenty-five thousand students could get a voucher. House Bill One takes that out and it also takes out any eligibility, everybody's eligible, all right? So there's no limit and everybody can get one, and it raised the amount they're going to pay these vouchers to ten thousand five hundred, because you know it's been in the eight thousand range. So I don't care for any of that. The stuff that they did, they are going to make them take a test, all right? And it's got to either be star or the equivalent of. And those results have to be reported, but the schools are still not held accountable. And to me, that's, that's the part that I just have a really hard time with.
How can they budget for every student or every youth in the state of Texas, not knowing which ones are going to?
So the first year they budgeted five hundred million dollars.
Well, that's not enough if every student wants to do that.
And then year two, they've got two billion.
Still not enough.
And I'm afraid, Mr. Mann, in year three, four, five, it's going to be astronomical.
And they took the twenty-five thousand students off, they said, every student.
And they raised the amount.
They raised the amount, but they're not going to budget that amount for every student.
It's, it's going to be really scary and interesting how this plays out.
But they still got the twenty-five percent of, the low-income, twenty-five percent, did this down, write down in there?
Yes, sir, a little bit, and I think I have it listed, kind of the way they did it, if you, when you look at the very first page of the bottom, it tells you how this bill prioritizes them and it took out the percentage and it just kind of changed a little bit. It's the same, starts with, it starts with members of a household who are below the federal poverty guidelines and then it goes to a, a certain percentage of how far you're below. And, but here's the thing, and if you watch, I don't know if anybody watched any of it, when the people came to testify or to speak, they had someone from a private school, most of them were public school people against it. And they asked this private school head person, I don't know what that would be called, it's not a superintendent, it's not a principal, but they asked her, and they asked her the same question over and over and over. They said, if the special education kids come to your school, are you going to admit them? Are you telling us there's no way y'all will not let them come? And her answer was always, unless the school cannot serve the needs of the child. So you're telling me if a low-income kid comes to your school, you're going to let them in, unless we cannot serve the needs of the child? Because that's what they're going to say to anybody that they don't want, that they cannot serve the needs of the child. Every state that's passed this has this kind of stuff and you, by year three, eighty-five percent of the people that are getting the vouchers are kids that were already in private school before the vouchers were passed, you know? So now, the, the funding for us side of House Bill One, it does raise the basic allotment from sixty-one sixty to sixty-seven hundred. There are some small inflation factors for the second year. And I'm just hitting some highlights, they are moving special education, now this has to pass, they would move special education to enrollment-based funding, whereas everybody else is attendance-based funding. What else did I have? It, the teacher compensation is not, in my opinion, Senate Bill One, I told y'all that time, was a ten thousand dollar retention stipend, then a ten thousand dollar raise. What this provides is a one-time teacher retention stipend of four thousand dollars for full-time teachers, librarians, counselors and nurses, and a two thousand raise for part-time. And then it makes changes to the minimum salary schedule and that's it. So that is all they get for teacher compensation, which is substantially lower than what, for us, I do not think the minimum changes to the minimum salary schedule will matter to us, because I think we're already above, I think, I think. What our teachers will get will be that four thousand or two thousand. It does expand TIA, so I do think we'll benefit from that a little bit. And then the other thing, and here's where it's going to get interesting, and I said this in my update, I think the House and the Senate, the Senate is going to love vouchers, they're going to be like, finally. But what the House wants to do is change accountability and there's a whole list of things, the biggest one is that rather than letting the commissioner change it to what he's trying to change it to, it would tie the commissioner's hands and he would have to use the rules prescribed before, all the way up until two thousand twenty-six. So that would give public schools till two thousand twenty-six to adjust to whatever new guidelines the commissioner put out. And that also tells me they probably wouldn't even put anything out for the current school year, it would probably wait a whole year. The Senate's not going to want that. And I was visiting with Keith Bryant the other day and he said it's going to be really interesting. The Senate's finally got their vouchers in their hand, but they are not going to want this accountability. Are they, are they going to go for it so they get their vouchers? It's going, we'll go find out tomorrow and then over the next few days. So tomorrow is a very, very, very important day for public education. I've got a bad feeling it's going to be a bad day and the reason I say that is, as I watched this, there's, I've been people that have been vehemently opposed to this from the beginning, who suddenly are not. Legislative representatives who have always said that there's no way that they would pass vouchers, who are now saying, well, if they're going to pass anyway, we might as well do it. Because Governor Abbott's quote was, we will be spending December here, maybe January, maybe February. I know one thing, the House and the Senate, they want to go home and they're not going home till they pass my vouchers. And that's what the governor said, so I'm afraid they're starting to give in, but we'll know tomorrow. Any questions over here? Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you. We have deliberation and possible action to add, revise or delete local policies CQB, CSA, DC, EHB, EHBC, EHBCA, FEA, FFAC, FFB and FL, as offered by the Tasbi Policy Service for consideration and according to the instructions she for Tasbi localized policy manual update one twenty-two.
I'll make a motion when we approve this, please, ma'am.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Next, we have deliberation and possible action to approve, approve the revised twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four Lamisa ISD wellness policy as presented.
I'm ready to approve the revised policy as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Now we're going to, executive session is allowed by the Texas Open Meetings Act. Okay, the time now is eight fifty-six and we were coming in from closed session. If we don't have any other business to conduct, I guess we will on the journey. Everybody okay with that?
Everybody good.
Thank you, guys, have a great Thanksgiving, guys, if I don't see y'all.